Welcome everyone, and thank you for coming down. We're going to call the Grand County Board of Commissioners meeting. Twenty twenty-two order. Members of the Board of Commissioners who have been nearby their duty under the state ethical act to avoid conflicts of interest in the appearance of such conflict and further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter carried before this board commissioner with respect to which there is a conflict of interest in the appearance of such conflict. Would you please say prayer for me?
Almighty God, we thank you for another opportunity to gather this evening to do our best to conduct the business of the people in this county. I pray that you will leave God direct our thoughts that we will consider the needs for all of our citizens and I pray that you will watch over us, guide our lives, be with us as we go our separate ways to see them. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There it is, we have two field notes at the top that date has been changed, but current date, that would be a change. And then lastly, we're going to have this bed moved to closed. Those are the current changes.
All right. And then we'll have the chance to elaborate the minutes. If so, I will entertain a motion to approve the workshop and regular minute meeting. If there's a complete. All in favor?
Madam Chair, we need to approve the agenda, please.
With the corrections.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with association without corrections. Second, please.
Sir.
All in favor? Thank you for. All right, next we can have on the agenda, Ms. Darling, let it go.
First, I'd love to thank y'all for letting us come and speak to you. As some of you know, I'm Field Type Industries and we are a nonprofit and we try to raise money to fund resources for children that fall out of Grand County. Three years ago, Grand County Land approached us and asked if they could take field type and we at that time let them take it, but they could not do it anymore, so we took it back. And right now, we've got all kinds of fundraisers going on, we just had a bake sale, we've got loans being built, all kinds of things that's coming up, like Conca. And it's hard to raise that much money. Right now, we have one hundred and forty-three qualifying kids and we anticipate that it could be about three hundred to double through. And we spent twenty-two hundred and fifty and three hundred dollars per child, that's roughly sixty thousand dollars that we have to get them up with. So we really need a lot of help from the commissioners. We've asked the churches, we reached out to the community and most of them are being wonderful, but looking at us a lot of ways. So we are just asking that you would consider helping us. And I know it seems excessive, but I'm asking for ten thousand dollars. If you might have any questions, I'll kind of answer them.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
We got your mom, Rob, starts, sure.
Yes.
Any questions? It's a wonderful project and I'm thinking, I know you all had it many years.
We did, and what is the money, just the first part of it? Excuse me, didn't we shop for these kids? So imagine shopping for two hundred. At one year, we had three hundred kids, so that's a lot of shopping. And there's a lot of people that help us with that, there's a lot of people out there trying to raise money, but we just, you know, it's a big undertaking and we think I'll definitely get it.
Thank you for the work that you do as anything.
I don't know if you remember what we get that at?
Well, the board always puts money in the contingency for unexpected or new requests, so there is money in the contingency.
Now, this one, we would need her to provide this bottom one three, whatever it's called, certification.
And then the request, I don't have that official request, if anyone can give you my card, you know, if you may, can you mail us that?
We do get a lot of requests, so we will discuss this and get back with you all.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, we have backed up the needs assessment part of our eighteen-hundred-dollar health trust of New York City non-planning grant. So we are about, I don't know, a little more than halfway through the process and so we're going to give you guys an update on exactly where we're at. So these are going to be the substance use needs assessment findings. So the biggest thing to understand about what you're about to see is just the gaps and the responses of the people. In this, we aren't looking for solutions yet, that's what the strategic planning process is for. We're simply looking for your observations and what you see when you read this information. So we're going to go through it a little quickly and then come back slide by slide and get your impressions. So I do have Dr. Ostrak and Bela here, it's clear, to answer any questions. They're actually the ones that worked through this data assessment, data collection process, so they are here tonight to answer any questions. All right, so this is kind of what we're going to go through. Then we will open it with the strategic planning process. So this is the governor's order, so what we have to do. We will present you the findings. We did already present this to the Substance Use Coalition, so we'll give you their responses and then obviously we can discuss it after that. All right, so this is a little bit small, it's kind of large up there, so it's okay. This is our timeline. So in January twenty twenty-three is when the strategic planning process begins. We will be assembling a team to help with this process and that is community leaders, board members, health advisory board members, substance use coalition members, and then just general community leaders. There will be one strategic planning process outline as a result of this. January through May, you're looking at the process to take place and then May to June is when that report will be released and at that time it will be presented to the board. This is very small. This is Exhibit C of the NC MOA, so anybody can go online and find this document. This is the required collaborative strategic planning process that everyone who chooses under Option B must partake in. So this is the process that we're going through, starting in January. We've done already some of these pieces, but this process will be complete in order for us to be able to choose off of Option A or Option B. All right, so these are Exhibit A and Exhibit B. So in order to choose off of Exhibit B, that's why you have to do the strategic planning process. It's recommended anyway, but it is required to choose off of Exhibit B. So Exhibit A are your larger initiatives. So it's M O U D is like your MAP treatment, so your medication assisted therapy. This is the inpatient treatment that people receive. Early intervention, naloxone, which is Narcan distribution, post overdose response teams, syringe service exchanges, criminal justice diversion programs, which we already do to a certain extent, that's re-existing for us. Reentry programs, all of those kind of things can be in Exhibit A. Those are all what we call our more large ticket items. Exhibit B is your smaller ticket item. So this can be just provision activities, just addressing the needs of criminal justice involved persons, which we already do, addressing the needs of pregnant or parents and their families. So it's a little broader and a little less of a heavy list than Exhibit A. So this is the needs assessment process. So the recruitment was with flyers, Substance Use Coalition partners, the EBCI, Grace Place, the sampling was opportunistic and that means that they've been out and sought. And some respondents did a survey, some respondents did an interview, some respondents did both. You had the option which one they wanted to do. The survey or questionnaire, they got a total of thirty and the interviews, which was more intensive and a more sit-down, that was twelve. The data analysis was a descriptive statistics and thematic analysis, which was the interviews. And all of our interviews were transcribed by a third-party company. All right, so it was pretty evenly split between men and women, this is your sample size. About a quarter of the interviews, but almost half of the surveys were enrolled members with EBCI. The age range was eighteen to sixty-four, but the average age of the interviewees was forty-five and the average age of the surveys was fifty-four. So remember, these are people that are either in active use or early to long-term recovery. So that age surprised me, surprised me a little bit. At least a quarter of the surveys and more than two-thirds of the interviews lived in Grand County their whole lives. The age, this was, this I think got a little bit confusing for our Substance Use Coalition. The average time that the respondents had lived in the county was one and a half to sixty-four years, with the average time being greater than twenty. Sixty-seven percent of the interviewees to seventy-three percent of the surveys were formally diagnosed with a substance use disorder and the most common being a stimulant use disorder, which is your methamphetamines. That's nearly two times as common as your use disorder. So this, this question asks, when, when would these folks consider this a problem? So in other words, when did they consider their substance use to become problematic? And these were their answers. Some were as simple as, you know, as soon as someone starts using, like as soon as they start using. Some said it was when their children get taken away or when they start to get judged by a lot of people. And some said, like I said, just as soon as it starts occurring and some, when they become involved with law enforcement. More than a third described receiving positive messages about substance use while growing up. So what that tells you is that it's normalized. There, the one point that we got on here, there was a twenty-six-year-old, she realized it took her twenty-six years before she knew that it was not okay to be high. So it's a very normalized thing in a lot of households and so they don't see it as an issue as they're growing up. This was a little bit small for the guy, for the people in the back. The vast majority tried to access at least one form of treatment or recovery services. Now, this line is very specific in the access or tried to access because a lot of people immediately go, well, who was successful? Well, there's, there's so many ways to define success, right? The success mean that they completed their treatment, the success mean that they're in recovery. So rather than define a success, we just did access. So whether they accessed it or tried to access it. And what are found very impressive is while we've only been at this, oh, going on two years with the recovery to work and the community linkage to care with Bethany and Clint, they both made the list at seventeen percent and thirteen percent. So even though it's only been in place for two years, they're doing great things. So this will kind of give you an idea of where people are going when they are attempting to access services. So services outside the county, so where are people going, right? So about a third of them are going to the emergency department. Twenty percent tried the Boston Center and seventeen percent went to ADAC, seven percent went to Meridian. So Meridian is the ACS counterpart. So we have ACS or Appalachian Community Services here. Meridian is a service provider for mental health outside of Grand County. One of twelve EBCI members tried to access the Kana Wote Substance Use Treatment Center. So, and then nine members tried to, had tried to access any. So you only have one that tried to access the one specific to the tribe, but then you've got nine that tried to access services elsewhere. Among the majority of all the respondents that tried to access, nearly half indicated that was easy and just over half said they had a good experience. However, about a third indicated they were not able to access some source of services and nearly a third reported they had bad experiences. Ten to twenty responded that confidentiality was not maintained when they accessed services. So stigma and judgment, that's always a big thing. Over half said they were concerned that it affects their access to treatment and nearly half said it was overall was a concern for them when they tried to access education opportunities. They feel like people look at them, they feel like people judge them and they've not accepted, so they really feel like it affects their access to different services. Housing, about half are currently homeless. Close to a third are staying with family or friends and more than half had been homeless in the past, have agreed that lack of stable housing has been or could be a barrier to their treatment and recovery. And then there is a quote down here at the end. Transportation, forty-two to sixty percent lacked transportation or said that it was difficult to access. Employment, they felt that stigma did affect their local employment opportunities. And then there is a couple of quotes down here at the bottom. Costs, about half the interviewees agreed that cost and lack of insurance or Medicaid created barriers to their treatment and recovery. And then about half the interviewees agreed that past trauma or experiences of abuse could have interfered with them accessing treatment. You feel like that you give up on your treatment because it's been so long. If you've not got it by now, then you feel like you're not going to get it. Law enforcement, about a third of the interviewees expressed a concern that local law enforcement and aspects of the criminal justice system posed barriers to them accessing treatment and recovery services. There's a couple of long quotes on here, so I'm not going to read them all the way out. I'll leave it on this slide for just a second and like I said, they can always come back to this slide as well. Social supports, about two-thirds of the interviewees responded that their family is their main source of social support. However, half of them said that, and half of them said that people they consider to be family, so maybe close friends or somebody like that would be their main source of support. However, they did not have enough support from their family. So they, they are saying that yes, their family is their main source of support, but they did not receive support from them when they were seeking treatment and recovery services. All right, so these, this is the Substance Use Coalition's feedback. So as far as the treatments, these are kind of their observations they made. There is substance use disorder services. These are some, like I said, things that they identify as needs based on the findings. So this is what the Substance Use Coalition said, these are the needs that we need right at. And so around treatment, it's that we need accessible substance use disorder treatment that's nearby, that's a big piece, right? Inpatient treatment available locally, that's another big piece, you want it close by. Harm reduction programs increased. Low barrier affordable housing, well, you know, that's a, that's a need everywhere, but it's obviously a need here as well. More funding options for treatment, not just federal. The federal, there is federal funding for treatment options, but there needs to be more than that. And then more access to health insurance, obviously. And then a list of recovery-minded employers. This is a big thing because you may have employers, but they may not be willing to hire someone with a substance use history or with a criminal background. So you need to have employers that will assist this person in their sobriety and their walk in recovery. Stigma reduction is a big thing. There really needs to be some education with employers around stigma. All right. So we can go back through these slides, especially if there's something in particular you guys have a question about. I'll scroll all the way back and we'll just go through real quick slide by slide and get back to the findings. So this was the first one. So this is where the folks say that it becomes problematic, right? Like it's not a problem until X happens. Do you guys have any thoughts or do you notice anything about this slide that surprised you?
No, that's a, that's a real problem, unfortunately, and I don't know what the solution is. Some people want to throw these people away or forget about them, but you know, they're, they're somebody's child, somebody's father, somebody's mother. And I believe that we have to do whatever we can to try to help him correct that sign of whatever he is and get back into society, but it's, it's going to take everybody involved to be willing and from a Christian, that people believe that they're Christians, you too, love these people and try to help them and forgive them, you know, they've, they've made mistakes in their life. And if you spend all your time beating them down, they're, it just makes it more fun to get up. I think we need to do all the dent, where we can.
All right, so this is the one that, like I said, they either accessed or tried to access treatment services. And I'll give you the percentage of the folks that tried to access and like I said, they can, they could identify with multiple of these, like they didn't have to just be one choice, they could make as many choices as they wanted. So any thoughts or surprises or any gaps that you see when you, or needs when you see this slide?
Eighty-three percent tried.
Yes.
That's a big number.
It is.
So that won't help, the vast majority won't help. We've got to come up with a plan to get them help. Are all these searches, the plan going to be ready again?
Yes. Am I correct in that statement, Bethany, and Beth? Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to repeat for him again, but yes, absolutely, this is what we do have.
Well, I mean, obviously, local crisis is my problem, so that's not, that was not my syndrome, Bethany, it is a local syndrome. Yes.
Well, and so if you call local crisis, there are several things they can do for you. They can just like call you and check on you every few hours and that kind of thing or they could send someone to you, do an assessment, amount of assessment, substance use assessment and then if they determine that you are in need of detox or something like that, then they can come get you and take you there. And so it's an invaluable resource because someone isn't, you know, always in crisis during the week now and then.
Do you know, in a number of different entities, you participated in this survey?
Yep.
Have we ever gotten every single group that is working to help these people and lessen this problem all together at one stage?
That is hopefully what's going to happen with our strategic plan in January. Yep, we are pulling from every group that we can get, including the EBCI, to, to form this needs assessment strategic planning group.
It seems to me that that would be the place to start, looking at.
Sure. So these are the services outside the county. So anything surprising about this slide, any gaps you noticed or any thoughts?
How are we running at our center to this fault to do a trial there? Are they finding beds available?
Boston, last time I talked to ACS, they had a few beds available. What Boston is running into the last time I spoke with anybody that had contact with Boston is they are having trouble, they are keeping them longer because they're having trouble placing them. So where they originally were kind of just a transition.
Like three days.
Yep, they are finding that they are holding them much longer than that.
I think it was what they said by Substance Use Coalition, seven days?
Were they only supposed to hold them?
I would say they said like seven to fourteen days before they can find a bed somewhere else, but there's several different ways that you can find a bed. Like Clinton and I can call and speak to the emotional services and do that whole application process and then, or you can compromise with prices or you can get assessment from the Boston Center. So there's kind of a lot of different ways to help or to access that. But when you're at Boston Center, you are really only seeing the doctor about every three days and so in between that time, the social workers will try to find you a place to go.
So from the fund, an individual would apply to, let's say, Boston Center, what's the turnaround for getting them in there?
It really just depends because some, you know, some people leave earlier than they were going to or something like that. Because once you check yourself in, even if you say you want to leave right that minute, they still have to hold you without letting you leave for seventy-two hours to ensure, you know, your safety and the safety of others. So sometimes it's really quick and, you know, we've had people go there and just get right in. But it, it really just depends on like ADAC and other treatment programs that they would go to for a longer amount of time because if they're not having the beds, then, you know, you are staying at Boston Center and you, you don't get as much treatment as, you're not giving as much treatment there as like we would want because it is designed to be a shorter, just kind of like a stop when you're on your way to somewhere else kind of place. And that's why you see up there is the top thirty-three percent top treatment by going to a hospital or an emergency department because what happens there is, you know, you get evaluated by whoever's there in the emergency department. And then they have to contact somebody, usually from Asheville to attempt to, and tell them how appointment would be. And if that provider decides, you know, yes, you need to go to somewhere else, and there's places all over the state that, you know, they have to go to, it's not just a one-way to there. There's Party Hospital, there's Catawba Valley, there's one near Boone, I mean, there's all kinds of places. Um, so while you're waiting on a bed there, then you're sitting in the hospital. And for some people, that's okay, um, but like one person sat in an emergency room for twelve days. But then by the time that they actually were able to get into a, um, if they should detox, they're already dectoxed because they did it in the hospital. So they go there and then just get right back out, which really means that they don't get as much help as they would if they were able to stay longer.
So what's, what's the solution here? From what, what you see every day, look at those needed things that, that should happen now?
Um, it would be great if there were more resources like that in Grand County. I mean, we certainly know that there's not going to be, you know, transitional housing and inpatient rehab and all that is not going to be here, you know, tomorrow, uh, but for the long term, you know, that's what they need because a lot of people, um, that don't want to leave here. Um, so you would have talked to them about, hey, you know, if someone has a place he's going to see, they don't want to leave. So it would be better for everyone, I think, if there was a place close to here. Um, but as far as the, the turnaround costs and everything like that, I just think it's the world we live in after COVID, you know, they have less staff and more people, um, with problems. And so, yeah, just like all of our, you know, businesses around here, um, hospitals and health departments, uh, can't find nurses, can't find, uh, medical assistants and all of that. And I do think that's the problem.
I think I hear you saying that's definitely where they can, so, have a group of their kids, like if they get to the, to put that program, rather than go back into the state environment and have talent.
Yes, um, and there's kind of a simple way to fix that. I know it seems like it'd be a problem, um, but for instance, let's say you stay at Boston Center early and then you get transferred data. So ADAC gives eighty percent days as you detox. But if you get there and you already detoxed at the hospital, then they have a two-week program. And sometimes, you know, inside that program, they can stretch it out a few more days to about three weeks. Uh, the research says it takes you about ninety days of doing the same thing to form a habit, um, you know, whether that be doing groups or medicine in, in consistency for that long. So if you're only in ADAC for a couple of weeks, you know, you have not, you know, learned any behavior, really. Um, so like an actual, for instance, there's Oxford Homes. And really all that, that takes is a landlord that would be willing to rent their house, um, under the name of Oxford House, because they don't want to put the people that are living there's name on the lease because they might be there for a day or a week or a month, um, but certainly not a year. And so that's where people that are in recovery live together and they share the house, all the expenses, share the responsibilities. Um, and out in our state, there's some that are for men, some that are for women, and then there's some that are for parents with kids. Um, so having something like that in Grand County would be great. Even if those only, you know, six or eight people that can live in the house, that's six or eight people that are being comforted now.
All right, so this is the next slide, and this is stigma and judgment. And then at the bottom is also housing, which we sort of already discussed a little bit. Um, this is where, you know, housing obviously is a barrier as far as they feel like if they, it presented a barrier to them getting their treatment and recovery. And like, um, Bethany said and Connie acknowledged was that, you know, if they don't have that and they go back to the environment that they started in, then you're not going to get in, that's not going to be conducive to your recovery. Does any of this surprise you? Do you have any questions?
How did you find homes? Was it on the street or was it, you didn't have your own, you were finding friends, how was that?
So, uh, basically, I just kind of like all those groups together. I mean, we did have questions that were separated, you know, like are you just sleeping on someone's couch or that kind of, you know, broken floors or what? Um, but homeless, I mean, you know, have, we had a couple of people like in a camper that, you know, didn't have running water or electricity. Or some people sleep in tents or sleeping in the community. I mean, all those are homeless, but then also people that are constantly moving around for family, their friend and all of that. I mean, we considered that homeless as well because even though they had a roof over their head and they were warm tonight does not mean that they have a home. And we run into a lot of people where there'll be a family of like two parents and some kids, and then they will let, you know, some of the homeless come and stay there. And then that, you know, only works out for a little bit, so then they're back out, um, on the street.
All right, this is the next one. This is the transportation and, um, the employment barriers. Any of this surprise you or do you have any questions?
Question. I think that, uh, Grand County Transit, you know, take some of these things to work and forward to their performance. You know, if, if it can lead rise to an appointment, uh, with Appalachian or someone, then it, it would seem to me that Appalachian and Transit need to, to coordinate that to where it's easier, uh, you know, have dedicated space and time that you're going to take people to the, you know, locations or whatever. So, I mean, if there's a vehicle there for them to get in and ride to, you know, from point A to point B, then there should be no reason that the ones that want to go aren't getting to go. So, I mean, I don't know how you accomplish that, but, uh, you know, Appalachian should be willing to, uh, work with, you know, the, the local community at least, and, you know, they have an office here in town, uh, so it shouldn't be that difficult to, uh, coordinate that where people can get to their appointments. You know, if, if people are needing intense, uh, therapy, they either have to, uh, travel to Franklin three days a week, uh, for a three-hour-a-day, uh, session over there. So, you know, transportation's an, you know, issue there for these folks that more likely don't have a car or, you know, driver's license and, you know, transit could be used to fill that void, I would think.
Are we currently, are we currently using transit?
We are. At the Health Department, we are. Um, but like I said, we don't, we didn't ask really the details of, of their lack of transportation, but Bethany, Clint's clients utilize transit, absolutely.
Well, I, I recently, uh, interacted with someone needing services. And this person voluntarily went up to Custerstone Division, uh, left there eight days later with an action plan. And it took almost a month to get the first session of an appointment so that it could better, the first session of the intense therapy. Uh, you know, and when we would ask questions, we didn't get answers during the time, but we'd be validated for it and it's one of those, so, not total failure, but I think in this case, the improvement on the intake, the early intake, and then definitely some coordination on the transportation side. My opinion is how much?
I can think a little bit to that. Um, so, yes, a lot of parts do utilize the transit. And, but there's a lot of issues there too as well. For instance, there's only nine transit vehicles. And there's people that, you know, maybe sick and out of work or that kind of thing. And, um, so there's people that have to have life-saving things like dialysis and stuff like that or cancer treatments. And so, uh, the transit absolutely does an amazing, uh, an amazing job, but you have that kind of thing. So like if I need to go to Asheville, then I might have to transfer my doctor appointment to a date when they're already going to Asheville or something like that. I mean, they really, really do come hard. Uh, but any personal accountability of the client who wants to ride on a transit, you know, they have to be up, they have to be ready, they have to be ready to get on the bus when the bus gets there. Um, they have to schedule their appointments on the transit at least three days before they need to go somewhere. Um, and then also like, let's say it's a mom and she, you know, at home with her two babies. Then, you know, the babies have to come with her and that's car seats. And so, you know, even though the transit is absolutely great, um, there's things like that that come with. Um, and as far as you were talking about, um, substance abuse intensive outpatient, so they were doing that program, um, regularly. But, you know, we all know that there's some people that don't have the internet, uh, that don't know how to operate, you know, Zoom or something like that, um, don't have service at their house. Um, so yes, for Appalachian, right now Franklin is the closest place you can come and do that program, um, in person. So, I mean, I certainly wish that we could do that here in person, but, you know, that's logistics and stuff having to do, um, with Appalachian. And the same kind of thing, even though they use it and I think, like as soon as they get home, they should be, you know, hooked up with something. Um, you know, Appalachian's process does not make it that way because you have to come for, uh, what they call a part A and a part B, and that's two different appointments, um, for assessments. And so then, once you get through those, then, you know, the social worker or therapist has to say, okay, yes, you qualify for that program. And then at that point, you know, that's when you can go. And you're right, it could be a month, um, but that's just a system that we're working with and it's certainly better than nothing, but, you know, there's absolutely, um, issues there as well that can't be overcame by us.
So this is the next slide, you have the cost and trauma and abuse.
Can I move back?
Oh, go ahead, sure.
The important part.
Sure, you want to go back to the slide or just talk about it?
Uh, just talk about the important part.
Okay.
There are so many businesses that have been willing to work and have worked with, uh, people on trying to get them employed, but the fact that it is, is, uh, for the, I want to say for the past two years, I've only seen one percent of those employed for substance abuse or on the men that has studied. Because after the process of one or two paychecks, they're gone. And they're right back doing the same thing that they were doing. And then they'll clean themselves up and they come back. But it is, it is basically, it's the individual that has to make that decision. We can't make that decision for them. I mean, we can throw all kinds of dollars, programs or whatever we have to do at them, they have to make that decision. They have to make that determination if they want to clean themselves up and follow what they need to do. I mean, what else can you do? I mean, we can, whatever it takes, we can provide them transportation, we can provide them jobs. But at the end of the time, is that individual, they have to make that determination if they want to succeed or if they want to just take it and just totally walk away. And it's a revolving door. And in some of these cases, as you were talking about, the thirty-three percent emergency routes, it's a revolving door. It's usually the same ones over and over and over. And that is where you have the reoccurring, is where that individual is giving up. And I mean, we can throw dollars, we can throw help, we can hug them, we can pray for them, they have to make that decision. And that's all, and businesses have opened the doors up for these people, but they have shut the doors on businesses. And that's what, that's what's tough.
Well, we also found that some businesses, it was a corporate issue because when you run, um, criminal background checks, some employers are more flexible with that kind of thing than other employers. Um, and that's, I mean, there's not a lot they can do about that, those are just the rules. So that's one of the other, um, big things that we ran into was just dealing with corporates, um, with some of our employees. So a lot of our smaller local businesses were, were amicable and very, very open to working with us, but when you deal with some of the corporate employers, they have, they have corporate policy, you know? And so when you get back, background checks or whatever the case may be, you know, it's, that's just one area that they're not willing to be flexible on, so.
Well, one of the things is, the federal government gave, uh, dollars to help assist these people to come in because they have that background check. They were able to be able to set guidelines and be able to work with these. And, and I worked with Marine and other organizations to be able to help some of these employees get employed, but like I say, one percent of them.
Yeah. All right, uh, cost and trauma and abuse, anything about this surprise you or do you have any questions? Okay, uh, this is the slide about law enforcement. Um, anybody, uh, on the board have any questions or does this surprise you? Do you see any gaps or anything like that?
What barriers did they cite, uh, preventing accessible treatment?
Uh, oh, are you going back? So we're not talking the law enforcement slide, you want to go back? Oh, um, let's see. Oh, okay, so, um, basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kayla and Bethany. So what you're looking at here is, um, if the person asks, what's, what's the treatment? So where can I go for treatment? Law enforcement didn't make that referral, best I can tell. So they would ask, where do I go for treatment? And, um, law enforcement didn't provide that referral. Uh, I think one of the slides, and I'm not sure if it was on this one or not, said that they ended up getting it with their probation officer, um, in one of the quotes. So I think that's really what you're seeing here is, um, really the biggest thing that they, that we pulled out of this was the, the stigma piece where, as it says in both of these quotes, um, you know, they, they, they got labeled. And so their vehicle gets targeted or their person gets targeted, um, because of, of being associated with that kind of environment and that kind of behavior. So that's really what you're looking at here. Um, I think one of them said that, uh, and maybe this quote actually, um, that they try to go to treatment, but if their license has been revoked, you know, they're not supposed to drive. Or, um, you know, their license revoked and they're trying to go to work, you know? So I think that's, that's also kind of what that quote is getting at. And like I said, you guys are welcome to correct me, but, um, yeah, that's kind of where that, where that quote is going.
I wouldn't think, uh, law enforcement had a lot of control over revoking a license if it was, it was a valid.
Oh, yeah, no, not, not the revocation of it, it's pulling them with, and knowing that their license is revoked.
If law enforcement wasn't able to give them a referral, that would have been one of the path for, or suggestions, best I can correct if I'm wrong, that might be a break down, uh, give assistance in another victim. a great, given assistance and another good reason to bring law enforcement to the table.
Yes. And Clint has helped, I think, a lot with that, and with the law enforcement. He's done some ride-alongs with the deputies, and has a pretty good working relationship with everybody in jail, definitely, but even with the, the road deputies, on trying to get, trying to get these folks some help. So this is their social support. So this is the slide where basically said, you know, every, more than half or two-thirds consider family, or those they consider to be family their main source of support, but they don't receive that support from those family members. So, does anything about this slide surprise you? Do you see any concerns or gaps, or have any questions? These were, like I said, the needs assessment from the Substance Use Coalition, this is the needs that they pulled out of, when we went through these slides. Does anybody have any questions with what Substance Use Coalition brought? Or anything that you'd like to add? All right, anybody else have any questions before we close it out?
Can I comment on the last slide? Because one of the things on there was like more employers, like we're just talking about, and things like that. And so, at the beginning of my work in here, that's what I was doing, was helping people get jobs and stuff like that. But what I wanted to bring into me more than a couple times, is even though, like, I had went and introduced myself, and the person got a job, and, you know, I could say, hey, you know, if there's, if you see any problems or anything like that, and like, go ahead and call me, and then I could try to, you know, stop that before it goes any further, you know, with the client. And so I had one get fired, and then when I talked to the employer, I was like, hey, you know, what was going on? And, you know, they gave me a list of like behaviors and things like that, and I was like, you know, if you would have called me, then I could have come out here and checked on them, and kind of, you know, tried to, you know, get them back on the right track. I mean, of course, it's everyone's individual perception of what they do, but sometimes it's just, you know, knowing that somebody cares enough to do that. So, you know, I tried to do that. Because, I mean, it really can head off like another relapse or another episode, just have someone come to your house and check on you, and hear that, you know, you've been working early, or you have a big one, or, or, always say so support with employers and everything, for working free to work. And then also, I built a great relationship with Sheila Trout at NC Works, Trent County. She's a career, or was a career counselor. She has since left NC Works, and so the relationship isn't as tight as it used to be. But she and I, you know, went to plenty of businesses out in the community, to, you know, introduce myself, what I could do, introduce herself, what she could do for us, like, better bonding, and like insurance, in case you accepted someone that had criminal background, or, and like, something got broken, or something got missing, or that kind of thing, it's free insurance for that. So, I felt like when that was going strong, you know, that's a lit, employers kind of, hey, we're here, not just like, okay, you can go to job, but, you know, call me, if there's like something that, you know, you want me to help, help them with, like, for instance, getting along with their coworkers, you know, how you will behave in authority situations, all these kind of things. And I think some employers missed out on that part, because they didn't contact us. So that's really something that we want to make sure of when we do have an employer, that hire someone that, you know, we know, hey, this is getting hard, they may not have the skills that they need, but I'm someone here, you know, to help them with that, so you don't have to worry about that part. And that goes for me and Clinton as well. You know, we want to provide that support, but I don't really think that maybe some employers realize exactly, like, how, how we would do that, or how much we could do for that. And I will say, there have been a few employers in the county who have absolutely been hurt. But then there's plenty others that don't want to do this, and I mean, I understand, I do. But, you know, if we want these people to be contributed members of society, then we have to get them healthy. And if you have responsibility, responsibility, like, not being to work on time all those things, that is part of your treatment and part of your healing, because you find purpose. And when people, you know, they don't have a job, or they don't have their kids, or anything like that, you know, they feel that they have no purpose, which perpetuates, you know, now I'm getting used because I don't matter to anybody, I don't have anything to do, and so then that can just continue the cycle, unless it's stopped there.
Do you give a chance to the employer, or what does that call you, when you get some high profile?
Well, we have, kind of played around with that, because, as you know, Clinton and I both were neither of these positions, and so, I will say, maybe at the beginning, like, I wasn't reaching out to the employer on a consistent basis, because I did kind of think, well, if there's a problem, then they'll let me know. But towards the end, building relationships, especially with NOC, and that, I'm sorry, I can't get the name right now, Men's Health Door Center and Quanten, both of those. So I could totally call them at any time and ask them, you know, how's it going, and all that kind of thing. But that's just something we learned over time.
Any other questions? All right, that would be for us?
Next, go to the agenda. Ready?
I am here tonight to fulfill a duty that was given to me by my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Because I would not back down from the commitment made between the Lord and myself, false information was given to the CEO of AMCHC, and in return, I lost my job. I'm asking for this Ella pill to be removed from our county and to hold accountable the person or people responsible for the loss of my job. Holding people accountable for their actions does not mean that we hate them, but that when you go out of your way, not once, not twice, but three times to make sure that conduct was, was made, gross misconduct has taken place. And a requirement by the state of North Carolina to give any and all education to be public about family planning services when funded by a grant, it is a requirement. When I went to the health department on August the ninth, I was doing just that, inquiring and gaining knowledge about the Ella pill to do my job as a certified peer support specialist more effectively. When those three contacts were made, the grant requirements were breached, as well as my civil rights. I want to make, I want to take the time to state the truth on my behalf. I am not against family planning services, but when family planning services start taking babies' lives, my support changes. I am against any type of pill that takes the life of an unborn child. I have never said that RU-486 is being given in Grand County. RU-486 is the abortion drug given when a baby is already attached to the womb and is growing. My opinion, based on the research and the help of other surrounding counties to understand how Ella works, led me to this conclusion. Ella thins the uterine lining, so the fertilized egg has nowhere to attach and grow, because the Ella pill stars the uterus of a hormone called progesterone. When the hormone is lacking, the uterus goes weak, therefore forcing a miscarriage. Something that is forced is not an option, it is made to take place. The health department stated that a pregnancy test is given right away when a patient comes seeking Ella, and that if that test is negative, they proceed with steps as they feel can be taken. But if the test is positive, they will not provide Ella. Well, if the Ella pill is only good for five days, then how is a pregnancy test going to be accurate when medically it is said it cannot be accurate unless 10 days or after? Ella keeps the baby from never attaching and gaining, Ella keeps the baby from ever attaching, and again, forcing a miscarriage, or as I said, abortion. There are women who naturally cannot produce enough progesterone to carry a baby to term, and have to take injection to build up the natural hormones she is missing to carry a baby to term. That in itself shows that the pill does not, does, and it hides under the emergency contraception label. Anything that forces a life to end is wrong and is flat-out murder. The Ella pill was used in a study by the FDA. Ella was given to 18 women as a medication to thin the uterine lining, to make it easier for the baby to be discharged, and then another drug was given to start the contractions, causing the baby in the second trimester to be aborted. The second trimester for a baby, all of its organs are formed, and in some cases, it can even survive outside of the womb if it is given the chance. Just like the Ella pill, the baby is forced from the womb. Ella takes any chance, any chance, that this baby can give to survive. We need to be the voice for those babies that don't have a chance yet. Life is precious. Beliefs was mentioned several times by the health department staff, and that beliefs did not need to take away this pill, that was going to be a service, it was going to be a good service to this community. In the words of Ronald Reagan, if we ever forget that we are a nation under God, then we will be a nation gone under. My beliefs guide every decision that I make, because of, model the Holy Word right here in this Bible. If this Bible says that it is wrong, then it's wrong. If it says that it is right, then it is right. It is the roadmap to any and all decisions that I make. I will never budge, nor will I back down because some people disagree. I will stand with what the Word of God says, period, and I will fight for that. When we are at our lowest point, or having a life-changing event happen, we make many decisions based on feelings or emotions, and those decisions can be good or bad, and some can be life-changing, and impact us mentally, and physically, and spiritually for the rest of our lives. I am asking you tonight to please not let Grand County be responsible for handing over a life-changing pill, and be responsible for a decision a woman may make, that she may regret the rest of her life. A split-second decision can change someone's whole entire life. We have forgotten what this country was founded on, and men and women who fought and died for us to be free. We are a country founded on God, and we are getting further and further away from that. And that is why we are in the shape that we are in as a nation, and why Grand County is even being faced with such pill called Ella. I will stand bold and unashamed tonight, professing that I am a born-again Christian, washed in the blood of Jesus and on my way to heaven. I have a right to ask questions in this county without the fear of losing my job, because I am a Christian. My daughter had to have, my daughter had to have a shot for middle school, that was required, and I couldn't even go down here to our local health department, where I have always sought services, for the fear of false accusations that may be stated once I left. That is not fair. You are the front line for Grand County. You were elected by us people to be our voice and our shield against the wicked things outside, working its way into our county. Satan does not take over all in one grab. He is very patient, and he is sneaky, and takes over little by little. People in this room have come together and are united in a stance against this pill. Please hear our voice. Please see us without biased ears and eyes, and seek the truth for what it really is. Grand County has the opportunity to be a leader, not a follower to surrounding counties. I am asking Grand County to vote against this Ella pill, so that grant money cannot be used to supply it. I am also asking Grand County to set a resolution in place, so that no county funds in the future could ever be used to supply such needs. I am asking that Grand County take disciplined action toward the person or people responsible for the loss of my job. I appreciate this opportunity to stand before you today, and I am praying with my whole heart that this board takes a stand and does the right thing based on God's Holy Word.
Randy, I'd like to speak this second. Right now, we're not in session as the health board, because the vice chair adjourned the meeting. So, if we act as a health board now, we would be illegal. So, to my knowledge, we're gonna have a health board meeting this afternoon. Is that Greg, James, or?
It's a bit illegal, it's not here.
That, you got time for five o'clock?
Here in this location, and then it will be voted on then, correct?
We'll go and vote behind me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry for the blow up, the committee didn't say, continue making this adjournment.
It was an honor, it must be.
Mine's been a lot. Be with the board. I have two more to hear.
I can ask that we take a 10-minute vote, please? And I'll just go in and admit that's for me. Having little trouble sitting here, and I need to get up and move around, so if we could take a 10-minute vote, if, if we could, if we could vote on that.
No, you can call that's the chairman, it's a 10-minute break then.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for their patience, and we'll continue with the meeting now. And we'll be moving into a, which is right now, but after, so maybe we should have a public comment.
So I thought we were doing the health board, and obviously somehow that did not come to fruition, so I'll speak on my day night. But one of the things that I would suggest to you guys is that you, minutes for the Board of Health meeting minutes and agendas need to be online, they are not currently online and available and accessible to anybody. Under events, there is no event for when the Board of Health meetings actually occur, because this was on the night, that was not ever announced on your website. It's in a grand star, but other than that, there's no.
I found out that, uh, everybody yesterday, or this morning, found out that I had adjourned that meeting, by accident.
But board meeting minutes and agendas should be accessible online?
We agree with you.
Let me say for a word, what's approved, I mean, don't put.
No, there's not any on there for years, and there's not one single one on there, so I bet it's approved.
My understanding is, this, read a Ella takes those minutes for the board?
It doesn't come from us, it kind of happens.
And maybe that it's a new, the new webpage, because of, you know.
If I may, yeah. When this board took over, the Board of Health, I began taking those minutes for the Board of Health. The Board, the Health Advisory Board will read a takes, so I've never been told, I just send the signed approved minutes back to the health department, I don't post them. As the clerk, I was saying that would just be up to the board, I mean, the health board, to put on their website, because I couldn't get everything on, on ours. But I will mention that to them, and have it put up there. I just never have thought of that.
It's important to note, too, that although they have their own website, it is linked to our new one, so there could have been, remember, we just had our website redone and everything linked and uploaded to that, potentially they haven't gotten that all together.
That's why I still.
Yeah, it's all, all Grand County's, it's a brand-new website.
Thank you for paying attention and care, Missy, I appreciate it. Okay, Caitlin Breiten?
Breiten.
I'm sorry?
My name's Caitlin Breiten, I'm a women's health nurse practitioner here in the community, and I was at the Health Advisory Board meeting last Monday, got to share some, some facts about the emergency contraception that's been on the table. I debated whether to save this for our next Health Advisory Meeting, but just in light of what we heard tonight, I thought it would be helpful to learn a little bit of additional information about the primary concern with the medication that we're talking about. The medication that we're talking about is Ella, it's emergency. It's emergency contraception. As we discussed at our last meeting, it prevents ovulation from occurring. So that when there is sperm present in the body, it gives our body time to clear the sperm before we ovulate, right? We, the egg has to meet the sperm in order to have an embryo. And so that seems to be pretty well accepted, that, I mean, that's the primary mechanism of action. In the FDA insert, in the medication box, from, you know, this was put in in 2010, it specifically says, "It may also work to prevent implantation to the uterus." That's all it says. It may also work to prevent implantation. So since they put that language in the insert in 2010, there have been a lot of studies on this, because like I mentioned before, we're not the first people to have this concern. We're not the first people to worry about whether we're actually accidentally, you know, terminating pregnancies that, you know, that people otherwise wouldn't terminate. So here's the best evidence that we've got. The concern with the thinning of the lining of the uterus. When we take Ella and it delays ovulation, we see a corresponding delay in the maturation of the lining of the uterus. And that makes sense. As the egg gets ready to ovulate, the lining of the uterus thickens in preparation for implantation. But if we're not having that ovulation, then the lining of the uterus isn't thickening, thickening, right? So if we give Ella at the time of ovulation or after, there is no effect on the, on the lining of the uterus, right? It's, um, so the concern that it's thinned and then a pregnancy occurs, and then the pregnancy can't implant, that's misguided. The next piece of evidence, this research study that they did, so this is really hard to study in women, right? Because we can't like get people pregnant and then study the lining of their uterus. We can't like accidentally terminate pregnancies. It just, it's really, really complicated and messy, which is why this is such a complex issue that somehow, you know, we've gotten to this point where we're asking people who do not have, you know, a lot of information about this. It's so complex to understand. The next piece of information that I want you to consider, they took lining from a fertile woman, they took lining from the uterus, and they created this cellular matrix model. So essentially, they created a lining of the uterus outside the body, and they put plasticists in with the lining of the uterus. Plasticists are what happen after the egg and the sperm meet, takes a couple days, day four to six, starts to multiply really quick, right? So this is what wants to implant in the lining of the uterus. And what we find is that in, when this matrix, this cellular, you know, endometrium, is treated with placebo, and when it's treated with Ella, we have the exact same rate of implantation. So that speaks pretty strongly to the, to the effect that Ella has on the endometrium. It doesn't affect implantation. So even if we're seeing a slight thinning of the lining of the uterus, does that thinning result in a pregnancy not implanting? And that's what that study shows us. The other interesting thing that they found in that study, it does have to do with RU486, which, you know, GYN, we just call, we call it Mifeprazole or Miffy. We also, there are countries that use Miffy as emergency contraception. And when they do that study with Mifeprazole, they find that the plasticists don't attach. So that's why that medication is the abortion pill that everyone worries about, and why Ella is considered emergency contraception, right? The third point that I want to make as far as the health of Graham County and the women in Graham County is, so why is it important that this medication is available to women, right? Health departments never handed it out before, so, okay, here's why it's important. It works better than Plan B. It works better for women who are over 165 pounds, and it works better for longer. It works for five days as opposed to three days. And so what that helps us accomplish is people who don't want to be pregnant, don't get pregnant when they take the medication. And if we are putting barriers up, so what would happen if the health department couldn't prescribe Ella? The health department would have to refer to another provider who could prescribe Ella, which can take hours, maybe even days. Our clinics here are really, are really booked up. And so if we're, you know, it's emergency contraception because it's an emergency. We gotta get this on board before she ovulates to postpone that ovulation. And if we're throwing up barriers left and right, well, you can't get it here, but we're going to refer you, but you can't get an appointment for a couple of days, and then we're outside this window where it's even effective, then we are the cause of this unplanned pregnancy. And I'll tell you, sixty-one percent of folks who have unplanned pregnancies seek termination. And that is very black and white. That is something we prevent. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Wally Gibson?
I appreciate y'all listening to us on this again to where we can pitch what we believe and what we have found out with information. I'd really like to say I'm thankful that Caitlin has done more research, because in her thing the other day, she said there was no research, and there was. And the actual research that she is citing, I read that as well. There's multiple different researchers that say what she said, that there was no difference with the Ella pill and the placebo. I read that study, but there's also studies that show that some women did get pregnant. Of those women that got pregnant, a percent of those had miscarriages, a percent of those had atopic pregnancies, a percent of those became pregnant or were pregnant and ended up having an abortion, and then there were some of those women that actually had live births. There were zero in that study showing that there was any, I don't remember how they listed that, but there were no abnormalities with the babies that were born or detected. So multiple studies. The reason there's multiple studies and multiple controversy is because of what this pill is supposed to do and what it can do. And nobody's denying the fact that this is supposed to be taken when you ovulate, but that is the question here for this pill, and what makes it so controversial. If you catch this before you ovulate, then yes, it can act as an emergency contraception. But if you have ovulated or you ovulate during that time, you can become pregnant, and when you do, according to FDA and according to what she just told you, it prohibits the line to prevent the attachment of the egg. Again, it depends on when you believe conception begins. Do you believe when it is fertilized or when it's attached? It's a controversy. That's, I mean, we are, we're all faced with that. But my thought on that, and my belief on that, is why do we even want to administer, administer something in Graham County so controversial? And if it's administered at the health department, and if we don't handle that appropriately, we open Graham County up for lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit. This is a pill because it's so controversial, needs to be in more of a private setting between a doctor, not an FMP, between a doctor, even though the law will allow a nurse to distribute that. I'm not questioning what the law allows, but that because it's so controversial, and it does have those adverse potential side effects, between a doctor in a private setting, and, you know, and then it's on them if they want to do it. But the 151 family planning application plainly says that the Plan B, One Step, and the Ella pill can be paid for through the Title X Women's Health Funds. Says it can, it doesn't say must. And then when you go on over to the actual application itself, it says that emergency contraceptives must be offered. You can offer the One Step, which is not as heavily dosed as, as the Eulapristal, the Ella pill, which contains the Eulapristal acetate. The Eulapristal acetate is a cousin to the RU486, and it is an abortion pill, and it's in there for a reason, people, don't kid yourselves. I mean, it's there for a reason. And, you know, we can disguise it, we can hide it, we can say this study shows it, this one doesn't. But the studies are there, it's in the FDA pamphlet there. And one of the other things that I was able, just to pull up under the FDA site, and it's under that FDA dot com slash consumer site, and it's, goes into what is it? It's a pill that blocks the hormone progesterone. It prevents pregnancy after a birth control failure of unprotected sex. It works mainly by stopping or delaying the ovaries from releasing an egg. It may also work by changing the lining of the womb, the uterus, that may affect attachment or implantation. So, I mean, FDA is, it's out there, you have to look for a lot of this stuff, but, but it's there, and it's controversial. And I just don't think that we stay on top of things medically enough to offer such a controversial drug. It's more of a setting for a private practice facility. We're there to do, you know, your basic family planning services, and we need to stick with that. There's a lot of fighting going on with this. I mean, you know, everybody's got their own beliefs with this stuff, but, but it's, it's there for a reason. It's controversial, and it has been. You know, pro-life has been fighting it for a long time. Family planning loves it, you know, for obvious reasons. I mean, it does what it wants them to do. And, but if you don't take that prior to ovulation, or if you ovulate at the wrong time and you do get pregnant, I mean, there are risks associated with that, and that's what makes this drug so controversial. But I just think that that's something that Graham County doesn't need to tie their hands to. I don't think that's something that we need to be a part of. I think we're better than that. I think that this board needs to be on the front line, like Brandy said, of protecting Graham County's interests. I think that you have a responsibility for that, and that's between you and whoever you believe in, but I believe these are all Christian people that sit here. I mean, we all profess to know God. And if we do, outside people don't look at things the way that we do, and I'm not knocking them, but they don't. I mean, we're more unique in Graham County, and it's why I never wanted to live anywhere else but Graham County. I love our, our way of life, I love our way of thinking, and I love our God. I mean, because he is our God, and we have a duty. And I think that we need to realize that, you know, God's not a part of confusion, and this has generated a mass amount of confusion. But the mere fact that Brandy went up there in August to seek counseling and to guidance and information on this drug, and lost her job within forty-five minutes of doing it, when the guidelines on Title X plainly says that you are required, under that grant requirement, to seek, promote, orientate public awareness and communication with this Title X funds? When, when that was, that alone was broken big time. I mean, when she was there, whether she was there personally or on the job, either way, Title X requires that Graham County's liable for that. I mean, you're liable for those actions that were taken, regardless of what you can prove was said, what wasn't. You do have three phone records that show that there was communication made, and it was to Appalachian on that day. Three, the phone records don't lie. One was less than a two-minute call, the second was, was an eleven-minute call, and then the third one was after Brandy lost her job. I'm speculating on what that call was about, but it was to let them know that Brandy lost her job. Don't know that. I mean, I wasn't a part of that conversation, but nonetheless, you know, I'm her mother, I'm concerned about that. But why was that such a concern? All five of you have professed that you didn't know anything about that Ella drug being offered up there. Was it being hid? Was it, was somebody worried that, you know, Brandy was gonna spill the beans? I mean, I don't know, I wasn't a part of that. But she lost her job as a result of it, and that peer support, that orientation, all of the things that she went to do was part of her job. And somehow between her fact-finding and then her going back to work within forty-plus minutes, I mean, her job was gone. So, I mean, it, it don't really take a lot of science to figure that out, but, but I'm asking this board, and I know that y'all have to actually make this decision as a health board, but the same members, that's county commissioner, are the same members as the health board, and I'm asking you two percent to pull out of the Ella pill, I'll pull it off of the application, do an amendment on that, and then, you know, do through resolution that no pill like that can be, you know, given in Graham County unless the board, you know, is explained. I'm really troubled that such a controversial pill has been snuck into the health department and nobody knew about it. And you as a health board should have been told that. You should have told that. And my personal thought on this, when we had that meeting the other night, I told you, and I want y'all to understand, the health director sit there, I told y'all that this pill, what could be paid through Women's Health Funds that's built into that grant, and I'm the one that told you that you did not have to offer Ella. You do have to offer ECs, but you do not have to offer the Ella pill to be in compliance with that grant. My question that I would be asking if I had to sit up there, is why was I not told any different then? Why do my taxpayer dollars have to be used to educate an attorney when you have an employee there that should have knew because she was the one applying for the money? It's controversial. I would have come with my ducks in a row, and if you were questioning that, I would want to know, do I have to, are we gonna lose this grant funding if you don't offer that, or, I mean, where do we stand? Were you informed, you informed that it enclosed station because you wasn't in open? And if you weren't, I would be asking why? And if I had to ask why because I wasn't informed enclosed, I would be thinking that that was designed to keep me in the dark. And y'all are the governing board as commissioners, you're the governing board on that health board, and you do have a right to know, and you have a right to be informed so that you can make the best decision for the people in the community. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wally. All right, Jill Reimer?
Thank you, Commissioner Stephen. Um, I do sit on the health advisory board. I am well aware, and I did speak before regarding this situation. First of all, as far as our Appalachian employee being discharged, I think that the investigation should occur on that matter, because when I heard about it, I did some personal investigation also, because I feel it's problematic if we have a peer support person that is concerned regarding her Christian beliefs and wanting to, to find out information, that just asking the information, she was terminated.
I don't think you need to be talking about personally or with the...
Got it. Okay. That investigation should be all the way through to, to Appalachian, because I don't believe that that was what occurred. There. Secondly, emergency contraception. What is the definition of emergency contraception? You guys have had plenty of this. Personally, I have studied multiple, multiple, multiple sessions in school regarding fertilization and ovulation and the hormones and all that stuff, and to be honest with you, I still don't got it all. It is very difficult, and it's very piecemeal. So what I do is I go to the people that I trust. Now, granted that some of us have not real trust in the FDA lately, but the FDA, the National Institute of Health, and the American College of OB-GYNs have determined... and the American College of OB-GYNs have determined that pregnancy occurs at implantation. Now, believe me, they have sat through board committees just like this. They have religious people on those boards just like we are. And I have to decide when it occurs and when it doesn't. When you make the decision that now Graham County says that fertilization is when pregnancy occurs, not implantation, do we have that right as a county for the nation? I mean, literally, our women will be disenfranchised in our county because as a, as a religious board rather than a county board, we have decided that pregnancy occurs at fertilization. And when do we go so far as to say pregnancy occurs when sperm enters the uterus? Because those buggers are hot, and we don't wanna kill 'em. Oh, my gosh, that'd be horrible. I mean, when do we go to that step? Because that could absolutely occur as we continue. Or do we say no contraception whatsoever? Because reality is hormonal contraception does the same exact thing because it's contraception. It is not an abortion pill. And this is emergency contraception because you forgot to take a pill. You got a little amorous with your husband, and the condom slipped. But you do not want the sixth pregnancy. And you've decided that you need to prevent the pregnancy because that's what this is, is a prevention of implantation of a pregnancy. So, and, but now I'm gonna have somebody in a county tell me that I can't do that, so now I have to travel somewhere else? Or I can go down to our public, um, FQAC. They has to go by federal guidelines, and we can administer that drug for them, and we can give it to them. But if they present it to the health department, you guys have no obligation to pay for that visit. I'll gladly take the county money to do that, but it is considered still emergency contraception. Um, Ella is considered the current standard of care. Why did it not come up? Because the FDA, the National Institute of Health, and the American College of OB-GYNs says this is what you do if a patient is three days post, post intercourse, and they need contraception, registered contraception, and they weigh over a hundred and sixty-five pounds. So that is why it was not mentioned because it is in the policies and it is our now current, thank you because we have new medications, standard of care. And that is why it is not, oh, my gosh, look at this new pill we have. It's a possible abortive. No, it's not. It's emergency contraception. That is what they told us. That is what the guidelines are based on implantation. And like I said, I don't think it's appropriate for a county board to be able to make those medical decisions. This is a medical decision between the provider and that patient. She gets to choose whether she takes that medicine or not. It should not be a county making that decision. It is a standard of care. It's a standard of medical care that she should be given the opportunity to have until the United States decides that pregnancy occurs at fertilization rather than implantation. And right now, I think it's still considered, I mean, who knows where it's actually at? But that's what these board have said that it is. I'm not saying it. I might have a totally different opinion. But I can't push my opinion on my patients. I have to give them informed consent. I have to tell them what we think this pill does and how we think it works and how, but like I said, if you can't randomized control study something, that's our standard. We can't tell twenty women, here's your envelope. We're gonna see if you're pregnant or not. We're gonna give you this pill. You can't do that. We have to do fertilization or, uh, metro studies, those kind of things. And that's the best that we have. But right now, I have a board of three different individuals, three different national committees telling me what is appropriate, what's not. And that's what I have to use to, to inform my patients. And that's what I'm going to use. I also think it's super inappropriate for a county commissioner board to sit on our board of health. Board of health for this county should be only done by health professionals. You should have one representative, not the whole board. You guys should not be in charge of this county's health. It is ridiculous to be standing here time after time after time arguing the same point over and over again and trying to explain medical terminology that I shouldn't have to explain to my nurses at my health department or the standard of care that is involved in this health department. You guys should be totally off the county health board. And that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
I got something I want to say. These student gals right here, they're not from here. And I, I, I think we can all agree on that. And I don't think they have any business of coming from somewhere else and telling you, you don't think we're sitting on the health board or making any other decisions for you. They're not from here. They don't live like we do. I don't think they were to be influencing anybody's decision on what's going on here.
Thank you. Okay, uh.
Thank you.
County manager report, Jason.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, uh, move forward with the county manager's report, and then I'll move into the project manager's report. Thanks, everybody, for being here. First item, I'm gonna try to go through these fairly quickly. I was concerned from my last meeting, as you know, that we were supposed to get some results from the horse grant objection. So I emailed to find out, have they come up with a, uh, answer or if they've made a decision, they have not. And quote, US Forest said it has taken longer than expected to finish the review. As soon as the objection review has concluded, they will send a final response to all objectors and their interessen. So the good news is, and one of my fears was I would get an email.
Who gave that statement from?
Debbie, I don't remember her last name. She worked with the US Forest Service. She said, well, I emailed back and forth with all the plating of the meetings that we were going through.
And you still.
Yeah, yeah, the lady, I just don't remember her last name. So, I guess the good news is they haven't made a decision. I was actually looking on the website to see if I could find something because I was afraid I was expecting someone to look in. They are supposed to send that answer out, so all wrote down. And Paul. I will move on to the CDG grants update. The good news, we did procure the rehab specialist. Here at Todd Homes is complete. An onboarding call is scheduled for this week. That will be four o'clock, I believe, tomorrow. If I'm not mistaken, four P.M. We'll conduct that call, and that's where we can kick off, starting to work with the homeowners that we've approached. That'll also determine those site visits during that onboarding call. And the attorney has completed the title work for those as well. That was the neighborhood revitalization parts of the grant. I'll move on to the senior center. Which I'm glad, pardon my senior center, but on the coronavirus side, I'll ask Michelle, give you a little bit of a minute to get your thoughts. Hopefully, you have a little update. Grace Place, um, we had a conference call with the grants, grant administrator. We, uh, we had a call with a grant administrator last Wednesday and approved the RFQ for the senior center work that we'd been planning to do. They've distributed the RFQ via emails to about twenty-four vendors, put an ad on the state government website, and is advertising in local papers this week. Interested contractors have two weeks for RFIs and four weeks for proposal submission, which is good news.
Just long enough to thank you, Michelle, for having the interviews concerning the OBO problem in person at your place. I really appreciate that effort.
And then, I know that Grace Place, you were still dealing with some procurement issues. Is there anything changed on some of your?
Well, we actually do have enough bids now in place. After I think we settled off the floor after I painted that for the last one. I've got it.
I'm sure.
On the cross and keys and dotting i's now. And I think we're getting, getting real close to the end and presenting to the board.
Outstanding. So, good news is CDG is moving. That's something that we're all excited about. Especially with the additional money that we did receive in the grants as the board is aware for these housing rehabilitation homes and renovations. We'll move forward with that. There are no questions about CDG. I'll move on. As you know, we, sorry?
And do we have any groundbreaking or where are we?
We will. As soon as we, like, we've got the housing specialists, the rehab specialists now on board, we'll start our onboarding call in tomorrow. And once we get on board with a new rehab specialist, they'll start a meeting with the people out in the housing for the local residents that we're gonna work with. And once we get that scope of work defined, we'll start doing the groundbreaking and then start, you know, asking the paper to come out and be involved in the programs.
That's nice. And you get that.
We will, we will do that.
It'd be exciting. That stuff, right?
We'll keep visiting. Graham County's closed landfill water quality monitoring. All three wells have been installed and sampled. Once all the data is received, Graham County will provide a short letter for review and then submit it to the state. Survey, survey of the wells should be taken in place this month. And we are currently in the budgeted amount that we've, the board approved several beams back. And I do believe that might end up being pushed up the survey, which is gonna spot the exact location of those three good wells. Might end up being out in the first or second week of December. Glad to move forward with that. I provided a handout. As you know, we've got the, the new Graham County economic development contract with partnership, it's with actual Mountain West partnership and Southwestern Commission. I've provided that handout. I'll try to be able to provide this on a monthly basis, if I receive it on a monthly basis. So, Representative Mr. Josh Parker provided this update. And again, I provided you a, a printout of that. I'll provide a brief overview of what he's given to us. He's been meeting with individual businesses to discuss their needs and businesses that are considering Graham County as a location. He keeps an updated inventory of available sites and buildings that can potentially promote economic development in the county. He also provided, will be providing up, thinking matrix numbers as he goes along. From his reporting, the labor force has increased. As a result, the unemployment rate decreased from seven percent down to five point three percent in the county since January. That's some good news there. Couple of items, just a reminder of the board that I provided, one of the invitations. The first one is the Chief Giluska re-claim. Uh, the town has invited the commissioners to a re-claim tomorrow, November sixteenth at ten A.M. at Chief Giluska's grave site. There will also be a meeting and greet afterward right here in the community building at eleven A.M. Yeah, that will be provided. The next reminder is DOT has sent an invitation to attend the Wayne Carriage Boulevard dedication ceremony on Friday, November the eighteenth of twenty twenty-two at the Robsville High School at ten A.M. And I provided that invitation as well. The last item, as you know, we need to get the Chargers Freedom Setting, which is up there in between urgent care and the power building. And it really looks, it's a really nice deal, really good thing that they've done. And they actually approached us. I, I've sent back a couple of critiques of the, of the actual setting. I didn't like the ceiling between, uh, the stone tablets. It really looks good, but they didn't seal well. Well, they've actually reached out to us because they had some problems with paint, which I don't, I don't see the paint issue with ours yet, but it's a problem to look for. I would, I would encourage the board to go forward with this. I provided a two-page showing of what they do with stone, with this white and black. Then I have an email to, if you wanna hear from. Perry Snyder, who's the operations manager. And he's just saying they've had some settings where the paint, the white paint is failing. I told him I would wanna get with the board to see if it would be okay for us to change, let them, give them permission to come and change those out to the black stones at no cost to Graham County.
Great. I think it was great. Black.
I think it's hard to get that.
Yes. Well, it was a long process, but it was a good cause.
It's great. It's actually great. I've lost my attention. Yeah. So, make a decision on that, Kevin. Do you wanna go forward with that?
If I just agree, if they agree, if you don't like, that's fine.
We will do that.
Anybody have a, you know, digits in the left? It certainly did. It was so good.
No, those, those aren't ours. This is what they had to replace.
I thought it might be able to reflect. Especially when you're back to some flats. But the bottom of the way, uh. Okay. The river is a good city. I hope I'm loose and get in by here. Actually, on that key word, I have years.
If there are no more questions on the manager's report, I'll move on to the project manager's report. Yay. Quick note on the RDA, which we will have meeting tomorrow at ten. Actually, in the, in the process of legal processing that, the plaque, so that we can get it recorded, Brandy Cody's working with us on that. And, uh, the fire invoice. There's some question on the grassing, and I've got answers for the board tomorrow. And that's really it. The project is complete. And we, as soon as we get all that, the contract closure issue fixed and the plaque, we'll be ready to start selling logs. Uh, moving on to number two. New cemetery building is moving forward. Mechanical rough-in is complete. They've, they did the concrete driveway. It's about eight percent complete. There's a section they still lack. It's on the, once they east into the building, they're gonna place. The electrical and data rough-in is underway. Totally project's about seventy-five percent complete. Once they do the electrical rough-in, there are some, obviously, some internal finishes have been done, obviously, to give a rough-in inspection. But there's very little finishes, uh, just around the office area and mechanical bathroom area. The rest of it's open. There'll be some insulation, some plywood, but on the warehouse part of it just worked to help with shelving, to be able to hang things in the warehouse area. But there'll be very little to do once that building's done. Moving on to item number four is the new office renovation. But this is actually at phase two of that project. Women's renovation, construction is underway. Electrical rough-in is complete, and the tile installation is underway. Feel free to go in there. It's really, really nice. They probably only lack about, I wanna say about ten percent of the tile will be done. There's one shore wall, and then all four, obviously, we did all the walls painted. We redid the ceiling, painted the ceiling, um, put all the wall tile on, and then we'll do the floor tile. It looks really, really good. So it's about seventy percent complete. As soon as that is done, the intent is to move in. We have, as you see the materials in the back, we have all the materials except for the toilet partitions, which we're in the process of getting, make the bathroom back in service. It goes down, and then I get my personal bathroom as the men's bathroom across the hall. Me and Jacob, because we're the only guys who comes to men's bathroom. It, it, it'll just be a public bathroom. We'll tear the, uh, the old men's bathroom out and redo all of it. Kind of been aggravating the ladies in the office. I got my personal bathroom.
We lost the power.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, we'll cover this a little bit enclosed. Right now, we're just working with, this is, um, wait a minute. I'm gonna back up. I'm gonna back up to item three. I need a backup time. Sorry, my apologies, I jumped forward. Item three, we'll kind of do this project the same way we did. I'd inform the board several meetings ago. I'd provide you with the cost estimates to complete the job, to set our budget, kind of like we did with the cemetery building. Uh, some of this is basically in three, this is gonna work in three ways. Uh, the expenditures today, expenditures today is eighty thousand, eighty thousand five forty, which includes the building. It also includes rough-in, mechanical, and, um, some, or, excuse me, plumbing and some other things that we've done. Obviously, with, um, the, the civil work, some drainage that we've done up there. That's all been paid for. Um, what I'm gonna provide or give you tonight is the NEP and the security. The architectural finishes, you actually have, uh, the estimate in front of you that covers framing, foam insulation, walls and ceiling, drywall labor, paint labor, interior metal doors. And this, again, is the recreation department that has the, um, exercise room in the front. It covers DCT flooring installation just in the office. And tile in the bathroom just for the floor, nothing, you know, obviously, we'll go with a standard floor tile. The ACT, we have a drop ceiling that goes in the exercise room area. And then a trim of windows and plywood throughout the warehouse. windows and plywood throughout the warehouse, a little bit of concrete work sidewalks. That is 83,000, 646. The 32,000 is just remainder of, which would be the actual mechanical, electrical, plumbing to finish out the project. The concrete work that I have proposed to you, sidewalks and the backsides, 13,000. So the total estimated cost remaining is 132,000 to finish the recreation apartment building like we talked about the cemetery building. To the left, in the column under the project name, at the recreation apartment building, you can see the estimates started out at below of 211,000, high of 242,000, our lowest bid, and then at 342,925, with the expenditures to date at already at 88,540, and the remaining at 132. That puts us a total of around what we budgeted of about 220 to finish the recreation building. And so it would be, as I told the board, I would come permission, come to give permission from the board to move forward these finishes like we did the cemetery. Say again? I'm trying to get it finished, so. Yeah. And this is within the budget and what we already have taken along now.
So you're adding the 83,000 to 132, is that what you've got your total?
Yeah, 83,000 comes to, 83,000 is included with 32 and the 13 comes to one, it's actually 128. And there's not, there's like 3,000 or 4,000 finishes that are in that, like those products back there, the stall doors, installs, but hardware, hardware, I didn't list that specifically. So there's like 3,000 or 4,000 of those items. You have that 132 to the 88,540 already spent. That's right, it's 225,400. I'd like a vote, I'd like to see, make sure the board is good with us finishing this project.
Is there a sample, please?
Two.
All in favor?
Thank you.
You're bitten.
I move on to item five, I talked about four. This will close a little bit in closed. It's basically just working with Jay. We've been going back and forth mostly on the design architecture contract. We'll go a little bit over that when we go into closed. I sat down, the next item is the middle school, number six. I sat down, meeting with Lester Green and Kevin Lightover with the school. They're going to try to work out with their deductions that they gave on the contract. There was a lot of deductions that came, I brought the contract down. They're going to try to work through their deductions and what they're expecting to do with the finish to get close to that 76,550. And so I'll work with them continually and see if they're going to end up having to go somewhere and do something else. And Ms. Beck and I have already kind of discussed that going forward, if there's a little bit of money that we need to talk to the board about. But right now, they're working through that. I provided the status there, 95% complete. That's lending towards potentially the last onsite progress meeting will be next Tuesday, November 22nd, and that's at 10:00 a.m. If anybody wants to go, like I said, really, really nice facility, excited for our sixth grade middle school kids. If you want to go, please join me, I would love to take you over there. I hope next item is number seven. We also provided under number seven, you'll see that we did get the award for the strap state amount, which is 264,622. And this can go along with the money to go for the stream cleaning out a little snowbird. Also didn't get Jonathan, who's our representative over on the phone with you, the commissioners tonight, was not able to get him to be available tonight for prior engagement. My intent is to get with him, I know he's been negotiating with Adam's contract, my intent is to get with him tomorrow and find out a way forward where we're at with that. Because we do, we're close, not really where we need to be, to be quite honest, and we can talk contracts a little bit later, but we are really, really close to where we want to be. So that's good news there. And then just a couple other quick items. Eight is the pool resourcing. I encourage you to go take a look at that, it's really, really nice work. The pool looks really good, it's 100% complete. We're closing out the project and the grant. I owe Southwestern a little bit of a scope write-up, which I've already done, I'm just going to resend it to them. So that's closing out. And then I finally, item number nine, the cracked ceiling of our two-part blocks. I finally got the signed reimbursement yesterday from the state, the reimbursement agreement. So I'll be working with the state on scheduling that as well. I anticipate that, some of that work happening in the fall, not too heavily in the winter, but during some of this full months over the next couple of months, maybe a break between January, February, early March, and completing in the spring.
Should that have finished about the summer, probably later?
Yeah, I'd say prior to that, I'm hoping, but yes, ma'am, that sounds very good. But that's all about, unless there's any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Commander Jimareto and, yeah, we're going to get to that next. All right, so I've got several things I need to go over this evening, I'll try to be as brief as I can be. I will go through the financial report through October 31st of 2022. We reconciled our general fund checking account and what's also in our, we'll come out of capital management trust fund for the general fund at 88,29,525. We are a little bit below this time last year. We had a deficit of 281,000. That's explainable with capital projects costs we've had in addition to our implementation of the changes in the pay plan. We knew that going in as we did the budget that we were going to do a little bit of a spin down on our fund balance. If you'll look at the, below that, I've got an update on our, all of our capital management trust accounts as well as our ARCA money. Our capital project fund stands at a little over 2.9 million dollars, and will be at a little over 3 million when we do the transfers for the four months. We also have the money we paid aside of sales tax for the debt service on the middle school at 115,226. Our American Rescue Act account stands at 902,721. So as the board goes through and works through their priorities, we'll see that change every time. And then our skip rate for the courthouse, Hector report, now stands at 5,45,547. We've earned a little over 35,546, this is spring, when the money was dropped into our account to pay. If you look across the page, you'll see that on those accounts, this past month, we earned 24,364 in interest, and year-to-date, we have earned a little under 79,000. So those accounts are doing very well, and that's a big blessing as we work our way into our courthouse and justice center project. If you'll turn over to page three, you'll see our tax collections, they rebounded somewhat. And anticipate seeing November, of course, these things will look much healthier. We collected 380,158 in current year taxes and a little under 9,500 in our prior year late taxes for a total of 389,629. This time last year, in October, we collected 336,000. So you can see that collections are beginning to ramp up somewhat. DMV for the VTS system, we got 52,406, that's a little bit lower than 54,866 that we had this time last year. And overall, I mean, we're still staying ahead of this time last year, as you'll see on page four, but not by a whole lot. But I think people are buying more used cars, which have a lower value, which brings in a little bit less probably tax. We have collected year-to-date, 2,53,231 in our real property taxes and 238,600 in the DMV. We're still a little bit low by 16,745 on the real, but we're ahead 7,600 on the DMV. Looking at our tax collection percentage, that's the number that is very meaningful to me as we walk, work our way into budget season. So far, we collected 27.25% of our landy. This time last year, we were at 28.02. So we're still lagging just a little bit behind. I'm hopeful that as we, as I said, as the mortgages, November is a mortgage month, we start getting people's escrows in, and then when people pay their taxes, so we can penalize that this rate will catch up. Page six on our operations for the general fund. For October, we had 1,928,541 in revenue, and expenditures were 1,641,794. So we did close the month off with a surplus of 286,746, as opposed to this time last year, about 89,000. We are still running at a deficit, about 809,000. Part of the reason for that is timing on when our Medicaid cost settlement came in. Typically, the previous year will fall into the current year that we're in, because that turns 83,000, but it actually got in in time for the closeout in June 30th. Within our total revenue of 5,888,748, we also received our LATCF money, which is the money that we received out of the ARCA allocations, and I'll stick to that just in a moment, of 454,345, which is included in our total revenues. And I will stick to that in just a moment as to what the board can use those funds for. Sales tax was really healthy. If you look at this year as compared to last year, we collected this year, this is excluding the quarter cent, which is about 24,000, 266,66,080. We dropped just a little bit from our collections that we received for August and October, but if you look across the page, you'll see that this time last year was 197,000. So that's a, that's a good bump, based on the pretty foul weather we had. It was dry, and then the foliage was phenomenal, but the other piece of that is inflation.
There was manpower.
It is inflation, and that hurts our people. We have collected this time, or this time last year, a little over 129,000 more in sales tax from this time last, as I said, last year. We have collected on a quarter cent, since that was voted in four years ago, a total of 864,382. And as I said, we'll be moving some money over into our capital project fund very soon. Just looking at collections of that taxes, just to give you a little notion, July 1st, 2013, nine years ago, the board that was sitting at that point said it was not fair to the taxpayers and the people in this county that there was a lot of, and collected taxes. At that time, we were timing 22,000 in late taxes. We have collected, since we began closing, a little less than 486,000 of that 22,000. So you'll see that those years that we began that process is now down to 43,000. So that's a testament to good decision-making and the board's stewardship and a lot of hard work on the tax offices that have. Total uncollected late taxes as of October 31st were 395,860. So that's, is still tracking well, a little over half a million dollars that we have. And then on page nine, you'll see, as Manager Rea was speaking about our capital projects, I did an analysis of the total costs incurred so far. You'll see about 207 for the community building renovations and the election board and bathrooms. We've got, we're right at 90,000 in the recreation building, right at 95,000 on the cemetery building, and then the county match on the middle school to date is a little over 1.1 million dollars. The total of the middle school project as of the last draw that we made last week into the DPI camp was 4,22,000. So they're going to probably come in about where they thought they were, but I do, I am going to be interested to see how the change orders in that general conditions money comes into. Any questions? I don't have a lot, figured that this is kind of the state of the finances at this point. If there's no questions, I've got the budget report, and those single ones I highlighted in yellow are a little bit, a little bit ahead of budget. At this point in the budget year, we should have 66% in our budget overall. If you flip to the last page, you'll see we're at 67%, so we're still, we're still staying well in the budget. And then the ones highlighted in yellow are, I've got explanations for, in other words, the election board is running ahead because of that appeal. They've had quite a bit of attorney fees, a little over 10,000 in those attorney fees as of yesterday. Finance is running ahead because we pay 75% on the audit fee, so that will correct itself every time. Registered fees is at 60%, but that's due to, good news, they're making more sales. I mean, people are still buying that property. Communications is a little ahead due to some short staffing overtime. You look over to the second page, you see the dental is running ahead, but that's because we got 38,000 on our grant, and we won those dental chairs, which is basically 90% totally funded. And you turn on the last page, you'll see transportation's running a little bit ahead, but that's because they're still drawing down CARES Act dollars for incentives for their staff. So that being said, at this point in the game, we're still staying within budget, counting why we just did this. Any questions on the budget? I will, I will note also that I've just got an email while we were working our way through the early part of the meeting that our opioid line will be hitting, the second tranche of our opioid meeting will be hitting the bank this week, we'll be receiving 48,680. So that'll be, you'll know that the county will be able to use that in this part. Any other questions? Hey, I do have one budget amendment which relates to both DSS and the health department. We are receiving an additional 20,000 in the WOT money, and that is to help people with their water bills. So DSS will be able to give some direct assistance there. We're recognizing the dental chairs, the two additional dental chairs, of which we got a grant for 39,740. The health department has received an additional money, 7,250 in COVID money, and then the director did a first quarter budget review and added a few line items which are well-supported with their revenue, some travel contracted services, which I think were approved last week. And we got additional money in for car seats for our families, and then some additional medical supplies, for a total of 175,985. And if you look at the bottom, you'll see the WOT money was carried forward from last fiscal year and in the balance is coming in, you approve shared revenues, grants or additional revenues coming in for the dental. So I would need a board motion if it's pleasing of the board to accept this budget.
Any questions about the amendment? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve amendment number seven.
Motion.
Right. Right.
And just for your information, I've taken some excerpts out of the ballots for the local assistance and travel consistency fund. And just to give you some frame of reference, Grand County received this money, this was an additional two billion dollars that was brought in through the ARCA funding for counties who rely on PILT dollars. The formula is based on unemployment rates, poverty rates, and then federally owned acreage. So as, as we noted, we got the first tranche in on that the other day. Basically, this is a general revenue enhancement program. So they looked at, you know, all the challenges that counties like ours have. And Commissioner Eller and I can attest that we've done a whole lot of walking around D.C.
Yeah, we did.
Speaking of that.
And I'm just delighted to see these numbers come in. If I might not go all the way about that part, but very well could too, because we had, we had some very useful discussions with a lot of our legislators, and a lot of support, particularly at the state's office.
Yes, we did. And, and NACO, which is the organization we can, was very much at the table where this two billion dollars. You'll notice that, basically, we can treat these funds in a similar manner to how we treat any other local revenue funds. So it's basically unrestricted, except for one thing. We cannot laud it with it. So we would not be able to use any travel or anything like that to work through any of our federal issues or state issues. But you can see, I have highlighted just some of the uses that they throw out there. And then, of course, because this is federal money, it will cover seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenditures, this money will be subject to single audit, as well as just all of the things that we have to deal with and procure it, et cetera, if the board decides to do any type of capital projects.
Pretty much, same kind of agreement we have in PILT.
Yes, yes. So that's just some, if you want the whole packet of information, I'm happy to send it to you. These are just highlights.
Thank you.
There is. There is a lot of it.
Were you the one that found that?
Yeah.
Oh, kudos to Commissioner Eller again for slowing this out.
I'd just like to make a comment, in any instance, strictly a comment on these, these funds. And as that is indicated, we consider this a general fund. And it is the board's pleasure on how we wish to restrict those funds. I would just like for the board members to take into consideration the fire departments throughout the whole camp. And they have basically been living on a very normal life, technically about twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars a year, to provide service to the whole camp. And I would just like to, you know, throw out to the board members the consideration of some of these funds, or funds could be attributed to the fire departments throughout the camp.
And I believe you and Commissioner Eller have also had some conversations with our legislators.
Yes, we have.
And they'll get to work with us, and our money, I'm pretty sure you showed them where it's at.
Yeah.
It's a little private.
So this is a really exciting opportunity for our county to do some really good things. So I'm going to, I've got it in the general fund, because they say it's general fund dollars, but I will kind of keep it aside as you guys go through, so that we don't just let it just get absorbed into our operations. But, but it is a good opportunity to help our county. One other, a couple more items, and I'll be quiet. We did get some good news the other day. When I was at, at the beach last summer, our sanitation director, David Hallberg, reached out to me and said, there's a grant, and we've got to get it in like in five days for, for trucks. And so I put him on the trail of, of, you know, figuring out what the needs were. And we applied, and we got it in the day it was due. And I had no illusions we would get anything. I really thought, because this is B W mitigation money. And when you look at Grand County as far as pollution control, we have very little pollution. So we rated very, very low on the scale of being eligible. But I reached out to the state, and they were like, go ahead, throw it out there. You never know what you're going to get. So I did misspeak the other day. I said this was for the front lawn of trucks. And I don't know why I said that, because I'm the one that wrote the grant. It's for our big rigs. We can replace the big rigs that go to ball ground origin. And so they're allotting us, right at a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars per truck if we want to replace those trucks, of which there is a fifteen percent match. My request would be, I have to accept the grant. That being said, if we decide we don't want it, you know, at the end of the day, we can always tell them we don't want it, but I can imagine us not wanting that kind of money, seeing as how our trucks are very, getting very aged. But I would just need the board's permission to accept this grant, pending, you know, future procurement and investigation as to what would be feasible for our county.
Well, entertain a motion, the board to accept this grant.
It's worth making that research page, so. And then, I do want to make mention of fact that we did get the half a million dollars in the dollars to help trust, which will go toward our C B B G projects. So this is going to open up more opportunities, I hope, to make sure, number one, that those people who were earmarked to receive the rehabilitation of the new housing, that will be able to finish those projects. But I'm, I'm hoping and praying that there'll be extra money still left over that, that we can broaden that list out again.
And.
Very thankful for that. So that money will be residing in our C B B G banking account. And one more thing, and I'll be quiet. We are now in the process of doing our indirect cost plan. And we always traditionally use maximas to do. Basically, I pull all the data together, and then they pile it in for four. It's now time to renew that contract. I've been doing this work on these things before I came to work here, probably about fifteen, sixteen years. They've never increased. It's always been four thousand dollars a year, but they are increasing it to four thousand. So I would just need to find out if, if, if you would desire for our board chair, Ms. Orr, to sign the contract, or if we could get that signed tonight.
Board of members, no, is it yes, babe?
Okay. And this is a three-year contract, so it'll be forty-two hundred dollars for each year. The indirect cost plan is what helps us receive all of the dollars back from the state, federal government, for all of our human services, transit, D S S, health department. And it helps us pull those dollars back down that we've spent out in just general operations.
Madam Chair, just for the record, would you prefer that, or should we vote on that?
With it being forty-two hundred past this fiscal, this fiscal year, I'd rather have a motion, since it's a three-year.
All right.
If that's okay.
Entertaining motion. Thank you, is there a second? All in favor.
And that's all I have. Sorry it took me so long.
Thank you, some of the good news in there, one and that.
We'll move through the discussion items. First one is releases, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-three cents, and discoveries, the amount of four thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Is there a second?
All in favor. Next item, travel and tourism amendment on number of board members.
If there's a second, please. All in favor.
Next item is just a reminder of the re- laying in June Losco. Again, I think it's at ten, at the grave, and then eleven, here. Next item, tomorrow, that's correct. Extension office annual dinner, Thursday, December first, at six P M, at Methodist Church.
And bring a dish.
Yeah, bring a dish, sir.
If you'd like to come, I think we may, we'd find, bring a dish.
I mean, that's correct. Approval of poll for Attorney Dale Currie. Motion.
Is there a second, please?
All in favor. Next item, total valid gymnasium repairs for ten thousand dollars.
Motion. Is there a second? All in favor.
It's just approved in the poll. Propose next.
Next item, consideration of resolution supporting the extension of deer hunting season.
Uh, did you, there was one more poll.
That was Attorney Dale Currie.
Okay, all right. Do you have any comments on that resolution? I will, and then I'm going to ask Commissioner Eller to speak. I was in a meeting with some Clay County commissioners, and hearing them talk about extending their hunting season. Having been in that at one time, and, uh, it sounded good. So I asked them to send me a copy of their resolution, and how they put that into place. And then, speaking with Commissioner Eller a little bit earlier this evening, he brought to my attention some information, so I, and I wasn't aware of it. You can speak on that, please.
Well, my concern is, we're starting to get deer around, and if they extend the season, and it runs the term of the safe fire season, then it's pretty easy to dog deer. I don't, without somebody figuring out a way of giving fire hunters those seasons, I just don't see how it'd work. That would be, if they don't let them, they'd say, that would be three weeks of fire hunting.
No.
Or, if you pass this way, you're getting, not legally, but you can kill deer with dogs and get away with it.
They don't kill them through fire season anyways. I said, they'll kill them through fire season anyway. Yeah, but I make this stage through fire season too.
She is private land, it's only. So, stick up, Jake, if you're in on her too.
I don't think it's all, you know, specific private land. I don't really, certainly. I think those are, I don't know, some different stuff. Probably not good.
I think I heard some comment, or maybe I underheard that.
I understand they kill them through fire season, you see. Why cut fire season? I mean, they could kill them after the first party, see if they can have a second party. That's what we're talking about.
We need to sit, I think, we should have talked to Derek on that one here. I was, you know.
That's what Derek wrote, actually wrote. We can talk about more, you're saying that?
Yeah, that sounds like, uh, uh, and you're in there?
I like deer, but, you know, doing that to so private land doesn't create. We like fire, but too, we don't want to have fire season. Four people that don't want much, and you're, of course, I'm saying it's simple, yeah. But that would be much more, not no drive man. I agree with what you said, and, you know, again, I suppose, I go over to that. You know, the people that are better, they don't have much of a season the way it is. You know, I'd like to see better season myself, up and at the earlier, maybe the first and the second week in October, and, and, you know, bear owners out of the week, and let them hunt all the way through November. And then have deer season, and muzzleloader season. We've got muzzleloader season in October that, you know, you have a deer or wherever you're hunting, it's got to be right on top of you before you even see it, just many leaves on the trees. And, you know, it's maybe eighty degrees out there trying to. I'd like to see some changes, I mean, this is a private land, and I would see a real benefit there. And again, you know, the way the current season is, it's going to be right, uh, it's going to put people out there deer, and while I think we're bad.
What is the resolution, Tom? What is it?
The resolution? The resolution, I'll just go ahead and read it. Resolution supporting the establishment of local county laws extending deer gun hunting season on private property. Whereas, whereas the Grand County border commissioners recognize the importance of hunting as a vital wildlife advantage to helping preserve native biodiversity. And whereas, the Grand County border commissioners appreciate the importance of hunting as part of our rich cultural heritage. And whereas hunting helps curb conflicts between humans and an overabundance of deer population, often adding an economic cost to our county and region. And whereas Grand County, located in District Nine, and the Western Region of North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission aims to preserve and protect the above while looking to enhance opportunities for our citizens to protect in well-regulated and sustainable hunting. And whereas the remaining other regions end their deer hunting season on January the second, Grand County's season currently ends on December the second, limiting opportunities for our residents. And whereas Grand County residents who hunt deer with guns miss the chance to hunt with children, grandchildren, and friends during the holiday season, depriving generations of potential memories. And whereas the deer hunting gun season in Grand County closes December the tenth, which denies hunters the privilege to hunt during the prime season, prime period of the season. Now therefore, being resolved, Grand County border commissioners approves the adoption of this resolution, asking the North Carolina Wildlife Commission to allow for the extension of Grand County gun deer hunting season on private lands to January the second, twenty-twenty-three, consistent with other districts in the state, and further allowing future seasons to start on a Saturday in conjunction with remaining districts and/or surrounding regions.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, I'll call you in.
For Grand County, we've got a overabundance of deer population. Good to be talking to you.
You, what are your names, babe?
I haven't asked.
Okay, we will table this, and give it some more doc, and, and I'll talk more with the hunters. And then we'll bring it up for discussion and make a decision, okay?
All right. Ready to move on?
Yes.
All right. Senator, or, excuse me, Representative Kaleski sent an email out to the commissioners for possible board membership applicants for two different boards. One is the Commission on Ancient Defense Services. And I think the requirement looks like this person must be an attorney, but can be a public defender or district attorney or employee.
I spoke with Representative.
I spoke with Representative Koleski today because I just really wanted to be clear on this, but the first one is pretty self-explanatory. If it's a defense attorney, then it would not be for some board. And I questioned to Representative Corbin was, does the appointee have to be a, an employee of the penal system, or can they be a sheriff, sheriff's deputy, or some, all unfortunate? And Representative Koleski wasn't clear on that either, and he'll probably be over here tomorrow, and we're gonna get clarity on that.
Okay. Want to just move, make the table of those and move forward with that?
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move forward, okay. Next item, consideration to allow Scott Hibbert to drive county vehicle home. I can say from my perspective, I think put a standard of just use from home to work, I think it's a benefit of Grand County if there's an emergency, as long as he's not using it for personal use, pipe us, or he has to go somewhere with his truck and tools, he can get in his truck and drive it just straight to the place without having to go all the way to sanitation, unlock the gate, get his vehicle, and turn around and go back to the, the area where he needs to go.
I will call me, he can see sanitation from his house, is the only reason y'all are being asked, because he has to leave his house, drive right around the circle, open the gate, go in and swap vehicles. So he's just right there, it's not extra mileage, it's not extra gas, it's just to keep him from having to swap his personal vehicle to get into that one on the weekends and after hours.
And he is very close.
Yes, he is.
He's the number one responsible for everything on that truck, except that it's on his own truck, his house.
Good question.
I hear you, good question.
Good question, sir, that was the one.
And, and, and.
Table it till we figure that out, right? Because he's got a lot of tools.
Well, they lock that in the green truck now, I don't know how they're.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're locked. Yeah, it's not a, unfortunately, they don't have that much.
They're called group sanitation, yeah.
They only can do that, huh?
Yeah, that's true.
They're locked.
They may have something different, I don't know. They can't say calm down.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, they're comfortable. Yeah, if something gets stolen after, we saw it.
Please, I can hear you. I don't mind if they play the hearing, you take.
I guess, yeah, yeah, we can get a little more information, no problem.
Okay. You know?
Then we went on to a report, replace Meredith Jeans for TNT board.
Do I have a second, please? All right, all in favor?
Next item, real walk or real place to the ground with TNT.
Here's their second. All in favor?
All right. Last item, new world business, one item, new business, Ms. Kim will probably talk a little bit about surplus requests from Jerry Chris.
Uh, but our incoming sheriff has requested that our outgoing sheriff be allowed to keep his weapon, and, and that's not a problem if the county commissioners have a surplus of property, and if you want to surplus it to give it for a retirement gift, or do you want to surplus it for one dollar a day, how do they need to do that? Most sheriffs that lead get to take their weapon with them, and, but it has to be approved by board commissioners.
So there is been a person who said, can I have your card?
I deal for you whenever I finish my old term, with formation of, with information or two people for their years of service.
Jerry has over thirty years of service.
And we are talking about his salary.
Yes, yes, I wrote it down, it's a lot, nineteen.
Here we have a motion.
Dave, you know for sure that we can do this as a surplus? Do it as a surplus rate, a, um, this is a retirement. I do it anyway.
Does he make that a dollar?
Yeah. Well, if I'm gonna pay the dollar, but, but I think we can award to him as a retirement. How many? Uh, in, in a little over like five years of service.
Okay. Um, motion to surplus Jerry Chris's weapon or salary.
Okay.
So a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Unless there's any new world business, that's it.
Okay, I do want your motion to go into flip session under G S. One more, you do.